...the building process. Ms. Sanders?
Yes. You all doing?
Good.
If you guys can understand what we do in the building department, the person who's trying to figure this, y'all may be a little bit confused. It is kind of confusing. The first part of the matrix that I've outlined before you just goes through a building cycle. What dates would be what, how long it takes, et cetera. And then below are currently, as far as the late fees. A 10 percent penalty is added two, three days after the due date. The contract that the customer signed and also the back of the bill indicates that the 10 percent penalty will be added the day after the due date, after the drop box gets processed. So, I would like to have this considered by kind of doing that, kind of like do what we say to you instead of... The courtesy calls we make, they can be made anytime after the penalty is applied to the building. They're actually done two days before the cut date on the bill, but the robo-call says that the building needs to kick 5:00 p.m. on the day before the disconnect day, but then we actually give them our 5:00 on the disconnect day and then give them another day and process the drop box and then we start cutting people. All right, you went through it.
That's a story of mine.
Okay. Okay, so, now on the disconnect day, the cut start is going after, or the date after what it says, and we are already in the process of doing our next bill. And of course, we don't cut on Friday or preceding a holiday, which I actually think is a really good idea. I don't think we should necessarily change that, but I do think we should be honest about like what we're cutting. You know, if the cut day should be the day before Thanksgiving, we're not going to cut on the day before Thanksgiving because we're pretty nice, so we should just tell them we're going to cut on Monday. That's fine suggestion. And the extension policy, you know, as long as we're going to continue offering extensions, I don't know that we really need to change it. We do have a lot of issues with customers that we've sent an extension to. A lot of times I think it's because they're trying to move and get out of paying the final bill, so they come in and ask for an extension and, you know, I, I, this way if you guys want to deal with this, I mean, I think it's a good idea to offer an extension to people and then give them two per year, and if they fail one, then they don't get any more. Of course, the ones that fail, a lot of ducks have been gone. And the other thing I want to ask is on the Westwood people, if once they're cut and, you know, we cut them off, we pull them here, there's no more services, I would like to stop their building at that point, go ahead and, you know, do the disconnect feature for them if they're not getting on time, but then not accruing any more charges for bases and, you know, traction and things like that. And then the last thing I put on the, on the matrix here is the escalating bill scenario. You would be amazed at how many people do not call us and tell us that they're cutting. We have new tenants moving into properties and they, you know, maybe it's been a month, two months later, they moved into a property, they come in, they sign up for services, and we never knew until the last one moved out. So, I don't know what it does allow to do about that. Questions, comments?
You also?
Oh, you said Westwood, right?
That's why I like the sound.
You know, I have a friend too that, he was giving them that talk about it once before, that if you're not paying the bill on time, when you send your due date out, that's too late for them, right?
No, they still have, I mean, they still have one more week after the due date. You know, there's a due date, then a few days later, we'll add on the penalty, and then, you know, we give them an extra day, but we do a robo-call. Everybody gets a call before they get cut off.
If your local make that excuse, that they didn't get it, they didn't know, that they excuse that they make, you know what I mean, so...
Right, they had that excuse. I actually have a report that, in case how many calls weren't true, who got, who actually did get their call. A lot of times though, it's a cell phone, they don't have voicemail hooked up, but, I mean, there's caller ID there, it's the main line for utilities, so, you know, they probably know they got called, unless we don't have a current phone number, which doesn't happen.
Well, Amy, I just thought, hey, you know, I'm trying to get the phone number there, but I think the idea is good, so we remind them, let them know, you know, and by that point, the thing that we continue to remind them, I make sure, and that's like we share with us, that make sure somebody got this information, I know can't continue to prolong it for a certain period of time, but they, they gotta be responsible, you know, in other words, they help us ever sort of play, knowing that when they first get, they slip from the bill due, you know, they got a cutoff on it, they give you a certain time, they ain't gotta do that when they can't wait till the cutoff date, or they come in on the cutoff date and bid, but then the day afterward, that's when the trouble come.
Right.
I'm following you.
And see, we're already in the process of generating that next bill on the cut day, and that's what, so already, once that customer, they've been cut off, but we've already got their base bill for the next month, which, you know, could be $54 in base charges, so that's already in the process, and I would like to, like I said, just cut it off once that $46 charge goes on for disconnect, be able to write the rest off.
I like that.
I guess we're here.
Okay, you want to say pay.
Okay, yeah, because, and like I said, when you look at this escalating scenario, it just, you know, and if the customer, you know, I just, I just want to be able to give them a break, if, if they can't live there anymore, then I don't think we should be building up more services.
Do you have a question? Do we need to vote to make the changes, Mr. Gillmore, consensus to change the policy?
I think, I think the consensus will be fine, and what we'll do is we'll get you a document that has it all laid out there, that you can actually take a look at and satisfy, or you just adopt that process.
Consensus to move forward?
Yeah, I, you know, I think Ms. Sanders has done a great job of, you know, going through and developing an understanding of how our building process works, and I think whatever she's recommending is probably, you know, I would go along with, because I think that's, you understand it far better than we do, and we can sit here with our...
It's really confusing. It's taking me six months.
And what you think will work best for the city and our customers, and I think that's what we're going to do.
Also, one other thing I did mention on the sheet is about the deceased customers. I would like to extend an extra notice as well, I mean, obviously, if they're dead, they're not going to pay the bill, but their spouses, their family members that may still be in the house, I mean, a lot of times, I just, it hurts my heart to add late fees and disconnects and all that, and simply when I know that their spouse just died, so, you know, I do follow the obituaries, and if I could, if you're in the parts, I'd try and report that to the deceased.
Will it be, I like what you're doing down, over, our customers get the information. How do we, so you don't work on, like you said, for six months, is there any way, do they know, supposed to give this information, how, how do that go out to them, let them know what we're doing so that they won't look, look at it up at the bugaboo bag, saying, y'all going down there, and y'all ain't telling us, and y'all just want to take stuff away from us, you know what I mean? See, I give this, and I give...
Oh, I know, interesting, I know. I get called first. But, I mean, it is on, most of what I've actually proposed is what's on the agreement when they sign up for services. It's also on the flip side of the bill. And, I mean, we could do a mailing, it's not extremely expensive to do a mailing, like just a black and white page to, to the customers saying, hey, look, we're going to actually follow what we've said we're going to do, so...
There'll also be advice about when they sign up for the extension, that's where you start coming in the problems, or you're the customer, so that'll all be laid out again when they sign the extension.
See, our extension agreement is actually pretty good. It's, I mean, it's very clear, you know, if you don't pay by then, does that give you an extra week? And, and I mean, you could ask them, I guess, to actually pay both ways at that point, when it's past due and the one that's current, but, you know, for a lot of people, that would be really problematic.
Anything else? Consensus to move forward, please, please.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. On the three A2, is consider examining other possible providers to be certain to kill the service, Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, going back through some old notices and, and the deal, you may remember where there was discussion about water tanks, who would service our water tanks, don't remember that?
Just not.
Well, anyway, we did have an issue with that, on the water tanks. And it could be the possibility, particularly as we're getting larger, where you may have different types, for example, you go to the GMA session and you go walking the floor and they see you're from Harry, and it's like X, Y, Z service company, you know, would you be interested, we do such and such and so and so. So what I'd like to suggest to you all is that we would not automatically rule out, possibly considering some other firms, but it needs, I think it's important to have it within the lines of generally what ESG offers us. So that's why I provided a memo to you all in your packet that shows all the different services we currently get from ESG, can we see what I'm talking about there? So if you had some other vendor who came in and said they were interested in, all they did was wastewater treatment, then my recommendation to you all was that we would say, okay, thank you very much, but no, it doesn't make too much sense of it. Now, if they have a deal about, if they came in, they said they only did natural gas, it wouldn't make much sense for us to make a change, but if you had some type of vendor that came in with a bigger package, then it may be something you might want to possibly consider. I'm just providing this as kind of a basic ground rule of the deal, instead of having, you know, different vendors contacting you individually or requesting a company counsel and everything, and they're not able to provide all the services. Also provided to you, which is why it's also important, is the termination timeframe in there relative to ESG, so if you're going to make some type of determination about what you're going to do, I think it needs to be assessed relative to what the close out cost would be, and also be aware about potentially, depending what you're talking about doing, if ESG just decides that they're going to cancel the agreement. So I think, what we do is just use as a basic guideline, that's not to discourage anybody, because I know you're going to get hit up with that type of stuff, but just, you know, provide some information to you, saying, here's what they do, here's the other comparison that you can decide if you want to, if you need to...
Sir, three B's, community development department, three B1 for brief demonstration, ROK maps, GIS, Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I will be asking you tomorrow to approve a contract with Rock Technologies for GIS services, and I wanted to just give you a brief...
I could learn to understand you much better if I could get familiar with the way you talk. Thank you.
You ain't got a prayer on your prayer. One doesn't understand me either.
So I wanted to just give you a brief demonstration of what this company offers us. This is a demonstration that they provided us for, from Pinellas Park, Florida, you know, just go in here and... Turn everything off first. So, you can actually go in and, first of all, this would be all of our GIS data that we currently have overlaid on the county tax parcel data, and this will be used to facilitate the permanent tracking software, Intergive, that we are starting to implement shortly. But this also gives the city the ability to go in and create maps or look at information. I'm going to turn on a couple of items here. So all of the, we can have all of these different layers of information or additional layers of information as we get them added to, to our GIS. See some different items they have here. So you can zoom in. So it will tell you what the zoning is, I'll check that later, it has speed limits, so you can put each segment of the road, the speed limits, here are the fire hydrants that they identify, I missed, I must have missed the, the, the storm drain, and the sanitary sewer, you can change the, to imagery, so you can see the underlying activities there. And I think this is going to be very helpful to, and being able to sit down with clients and find the information that they need for developing, to know where those... So all of our utilities can be on there, and they've actually got this one set up so that the stormwater ponds are identified, if they're city maintained or privately maintained, if there is utilities that are private there and there as well. Some of the other things that we will be able to do, and this link is not set up with all of the data to be able to actually show it, but with map tools, we can go in, for example, and select, select an area. So, for example, if you want to know all of the properties surrounding, you know, within a hundred feet of whatever particular property, use that out, I mean, it will pull the data for those property owners without this, etc. If you want to do a measurement of some road section, or do area, that's all available there as well. But this, I think, gives us the beginnings of a really robust GIS system that will be beneficial to us. What they are, this would be, have unlimited users, and if council wishes, it can be made available for public access as well. I know it's kind of brief and not working quickly, but just wanted to kind of give you an overview of what we recommend you go with as far as really much GIS capabilities. Any questions or comments?
How accurate is it?
It was going to be as accurate as the information we put in. They have already looked at our data and said that it looks pretty good. I think they'll probably release tweaks that will be done, but it would be a process where we'll have to continue updating and maintaining. We are, as part of the contract, requesting the ability for two individuals here at the city to be able to go in and edit or modify, so that would be a little bit extra cost on our marketplace to do that, but it is appropriate for us to do that. One thing I do want to mention to you is that, well, this will be our primary GIS service. We are still looking for a entity that can take CAD data that we receive from the developers regarding ASG surveys of subdivisions, for example, converting that information to GIS that can be put into this system. That more than likely will be done on an as needed basis on our cost, but this firm does not offer that, that service. But otherwise, I think it really looks close to a service that we've, that we've used to pass, that is very helpful on a day-to-day basis.
How much is it?
The total cost is, for the first year, is $18,780, but includes $6,600 of setup fees, and the remaining $12,180, excuse me, is an annual fee for maintaining a hosting service. That comes out to $1,015 a car.
Counsel? No comment?
What would be the funding source?
General fund. This is part of a program you may remember that you were okay to take from the fund balance, the general fund this year is tied to the rebuilding process. The answer to your question, Mayor, not survey quality, but relationship quality fund. So we can actually go out and tell somebody, this is the exact survey that the property went on for the playoffs, which you would be able to tell, and is relatively versatile, should be based on, like Brian said, based on the different data that comes in. And it'll show all of the easements and all of that as well, is that correct?
I don't know if it'll show easements, we can certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, we would wonder, options, if it was in the panel.
It may.
We've got stormwater easements, we've got utility easement, and all of that should go in.
Yeah, that, I don't know that we currently have that ready of data. We may, if we do, then it can easily be put in there, if not, then we'll have to carry that. But, like I said, this is something we can build on, add additional information over years, I see this being something that the police department, the fire department, Public Works can all utilize, Parks and Recreation can all utilize this as a part of their programs as we, as we build.
The next phase would be, it'll take some time, other than the new subdivisions that's coming in, would be to, to scan and digitize into the GIS all the existing subdivisions of landings. And that'll provide, you know, the question on the easements and all that type of stuff, in other words, whatever the recording plan was. Now that'll take some time, you know, going back to the ones from the 50s, to see what they put, ultimately, the whole city will be ready with that.
So your, your department gonna be able to keep up with it, you know, and your department go add, as you said, add to, something change?
Yes, sir, we're going, we will be the primary department for contacts, they'll need, everybody will need to go through us for information if they want to add to it, and we'll be the responsible. So, it's going, and right now, the two city employees that we have access to, head team will be on there.
So every department here, if there's some change in their section, they have to relate it to you, so that you ought to make the change?
Yes, for now. Eventually, as, as more departments come in, we may set up an arrangement where they can maintain their own data, but we want to just make, make sure that somebody can't go in and change something without, you know, private conditions, so, but yes, that would be, eventually, I think, there may be other, other editors.
It would, it would depend on what the layer is, or what department want to do. You know, for example, if the police want to keep up with traffic stops and all that type of stuff, they would use the base, they have their own layer, they'd be responsible for keeping up that layer. If fire want to do something, you see what I mean, if solid waste want to do something, stormwater, now some of the other ones, like Public Works and Stormwater, they're going to roll over very closely together, go back to the mayor's point about easements and that type of stuff. But ultimately, it would be whatever geographic information in the city that any department feels to be benefit, beneficial to have, that's what would go on this system. So conception, you could have, you have, for example, where municipal court tracks something on here, as long as, as long as it's related to a street address.
And the way that this relates to the permanent tracking system is, the permanent tracking system is actually based on GIS, so you'll be able to go in, click on parcel, pull up all of the permits that have been issued, all the code enforcement cases that may be happening with that property, and that can expand as well to other, other departments in the future. But, I think, doing everything in a digital place where everybody can really see the same information is going to be important to have city functions.
Proceed, Counsel.
Thank you, sir. Three C, fiscal year 2019 operating budget. Three C1 is for fire emergency services.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, thank you. Have a PowerPoint presentation just to go over a few things. You'll entertain me for a moment. There we go, yeah. So, just kind of a overview, fiscal year 2018 has been a great year for, for Perry Fire Department. We filled five of our vacancies that we have with new firefighters, and y'all got to meet them earlier in the year, and we had thankfully three new apparatus that, that you allowed us to have, and also recently approved a option to go out for bid for the, what we're calling the Davis Farm NX, or a storage building out at Station Two. Here you can see the firefighters that we just hired, all of them now have graduated from Jipstick or the train center, and all are now certified as firefighter one. And again, we thank you for the, the new apparatus. This truck that you saw earlier was approved in the FY17 budget, but we actually got it in October 2017, and again, we, we stated that it takes a load off our larger apparatus for running EMS calls, and this particular one has the capability to fill 30 air cylinders on a fire scene. You also allowed us to go out, buy a couple of used vehicles, this one is a 2011 mini pumper, we placed it in service in March of this year, again, taking the load off a larger apparatus for EMS calls, and this particular vehicle has a 750 gallon pump and capability of pumping foam as well. Along with that, you allowed us to get the two... Along with that, you allowed us to get the two thousand nine KME Aerocap. It's a mid-melt platform, which just means it has a bucket on the end of the ladder. We placed it adding service in March also, and it gave us the capability of a hundred-foot ladder and a two thousand gallon pump with a three hundred gallon water tank. And we do have a thousand foot of five-inch supply line on that vehicle now. Then you also approved us to get a new pumper, which we'll go get it next week. We're due to pick it up on the twenty-first and have it back in the city on May twenty-second. So you'll be able to see it then. Again, this one will have a fifteen hundred gallon pump on it, seven hundred and fifty gallons of water, and this is replacing a nineteen ninety-two pumper that we are putting in for surplus. So basically, again, we're overall very pleased with the city manager's recommendations for the twenty nineteen budget, and we're very thankful that a majority of our requests were approved. However, I wanted to just have you bear in mind to be watchful of a few things in the future. We did request six additional firefighters and one fire inspector. Basically, that would help bring our staff in closer to the optimum, which I'll mention here in just a second again, and assist with our growing requirements for fire inspections. We did request replacement recliners to replace some ten-year-old furniture that we have, and some of them are in need of repair right now, and we'll work within our current budget to replace those as needed. But we did request ten, or, excuse me, eight at one time. And then we also requested refurbishment of our current pumper that we have that needs some minor work on it or maybe some major work, but we'll see what happens with that. So basically, as far as our personnel, we did request the six. The two additional staff, and it would be two per day, it would help us get closer to optimum staffing. You see there, before we got the rescue vehicles in place and put them in service, we had four people on a pumper, four people on a truck. Currently, now adding two people on the rescue unit gives us three people on a pumper, three people on a truck. And then at Station Two, where we had four people, we're splitting that two and two. So having additional two people per day would allow us to be closer to our optimum. It would not be perfect, but it would help us to be closer to that. And we understand that if that's not in the budget now, we just want to let you know that we'll request that in the future as well, just to try and get closer to that optimum. Let's see. And then with the fire inspector we requested, again, as Perry has seen enormous growth over the last several years, the Fire Marshal's office stays pretty busy with plans review, new construction, and also remodels, life safety inspections, and all the things that go along with that. So basically, we're saying that a, obviously, a fire inspector would help him out on a daily basis and help the city out with fire inspections. However, we do have on-duty firefighters that are certified as fire inspectors, and they are currently helping out with those duties as well. And we're kind of ramping up that program even more as we continue into the future. So again, we're understandable about that, but just know that in the future, we would probably request that again. Here are a picture of some of the recliners that we have. Most of the chairs we have up there, about, they tell me, are ten years old when they bought the last ones. And some of them are getting in some disrepair. So again, the ones that are worse, we'll try to take those on a case-by-case basis and see if we can find some money to replace them one at a time. But we did request eight initially. And then here was the, this is the two thousand six pumper that we have currently. When our new one comes in next week, it'll be replaced. This one will go into reserve status. But being twelve years old with a hundred and fifteen thousand miles, we did get a price of about fifty-five thousand dollars that would have, that could possibly take care of the engine work, pump work, transmission work, and those kind of things that would need to make this pretty much a brand-new truck. But again, it will be in reserve status, so we'll just take care of the issues as they come up and work within our budget as those things happen. So again, like I said, we're very pleased with our twenty nineteen budget. Wanted to just let you know that those future requests will be there and somehow justify those. And again, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm three C two, Department of Economic Development.
Mr. Smith?
Mayor. Mayor and counsel. Pleased to come before y'all tonight to discuss the FY twenty nineteen budget request with the Department of Economic Development. We've had a very successful FY twenty eighteen, and we look to build on that in the new year. That being said, no significant requests, no new positions were requested, no significant capital expenditures. Again, a kind of a year-to-year review. The director position is, of course, vacant. We look to hopefully fill that within the next couple of months, but you see some associated reduction with the cost in FY twenty nineteen for that position. We have some decisions to be made on the Main Street and the Events Coordinator positions. You will recall after the proposed budget was put out by the city manager, we determined that we did need to have a full-time Main Street position. So we're still kind of working out there. That's why I don't see any numbers for that one. And then communications, you see a significant increase there. Most of that is due to technology, the number of subscription software services, that type of thing that the city now has that are housed within that function of the department. So again, the primary functions of the department. Some of the highlights, I kind of went over these just for your edification, the vacant positions, some decisions to be made on staffing and function in that, Main Street events, software platforms. In summation, we concur with the city manager's recommended budget. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'm three C three, Department of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, we also recommend approval of the city manager's recommendation on our budget for community development. I did want to just go through some of the accomplishments that we've seen over the past year. These are calendar year numbers. Seven hundred twenty-nine total permits with revenue to the city of just under four hundred thirty thousand, representing construction value of almost seventy-five million dollars in two thousand seventeen. Year-to-date through April thirtieth, we've already issued three hundred total permits with revenue of a hundred and seventy thousand and construction value of thirty-five million. So we're almost half of what we did last year in the value aspect. I did want to mention that those numbers are projected out over the rest of the year. That comes to nine hundred total permits, about five hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenue, and a hundred and six million dollars in construction costs. The total number of permits were slightly lower, or total number of residential permits were slightly lower than in two thousand sixteen, although the number of new construction obviously was much higher. Non-residential permits, there's two hundred and sixty percent increase from a hundred and six in two thousand sixteen to two seventy-eight in two thousand seventeen. The total building inspections continue to go up as a result. These numbers are about twenty-eight percent higher than the previous year, and if this number, the year-to-date number is projected out, that will be a total of a little over forty-one hundred inspections for this calendar year. Code enforcement cases have gone up. Engineering projects have actually gone down, but the total number of inspections have gone up, and that's a forty-six percent increase. We did, you all adopted the revised and updated land management ordinance, and of course, we hired the additional building inspector earlier this year, which obviously we appreciate. For the proposed budget, you can see here in the administrative section, there's a bit of an increase. We are asking for money to scan, again, scanning all of our plans and documents. We've asked for a fifteen thousand dollar three, for each of the next three years, and the manager has recommended that for this, to begin this year. Building inspections is up. That's a lot related to the addition of the building inspector and the Intergov permanent tracking software. Code enforcement is up also based on benefits. Capital, the manager did recommend the replacement of two pickup trucks, which I believe are getting close to ten, if not over. This is a hot mess. This is why we put the scanning program. We've got two rooms in City Hall that are completely filled with plans, and then some of these others are in other areas of the offices. So definitely a need to begin that process. And as, in the upcoming year, we plan to continue improving and updating land management ordinance. The subdivision regulations and procedures are really our next focus, and we believe that that needs to be taken care of. We're in the process now of implementing Intergov and G.I.S. mapping, and so that will be moving forward. And as always, continue improving our process for efficiency. In the future, I did want to just bring this to your attention. We did ask for two additional staff members. One, we were looking at a construction inspector position to work with Chad McMorian on inspecting the utilities that are being installed. That's something that I believe really needs to be looked at and will be a high priority fairly soon. We are not doing a daily inspection of those utilities as they're being put in. We're primarily waiting to the end and checking to make sure they work. But no one's checking to make sure they're using the right type, that the fittings are being put together properly, and that type of thing. So I think that's a big issue for us to address now so that there are not future issues or amendments that the city wants to see accepted. And of course, we'd ask for a plant acquisition, which they think is important, but out of these two, I think the construction inspection position would be the most important. And we want to thank you for your continued support. Any questions?
Questions, counsel?
I'm three C four, Department of Leadership Services. Thank you, guys.
There's no way I can walk around this table without probably killing someone and not be one of them. I'm gonna stand back here and back to the desk. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel. Right off the bat, we are in total coherence with the city manager's recommendation. As a matter of fact, we're very thankful for this year's budget. Instead of going through the damn list of things, what I'd like to show you is, first of all, we're coming up on a third year ago. June twenty-ninth will make three years of my tenure as your director of police services. So we are in the middle of some big projects. A lot have been happening from day one, so it really doesn't feel like three years. To me, it feels more like a year and a half. But that's a very good thing. What we would like to continue this next fiscal year is to keep operating with fiscal responsibility, meaning our programming goals of cost expenses, registration, equal after the level. We want to get more into our adult program and with some other activities than just kids' sports. Ellen has been very helpful with us in social media. We're getting some positive feedback. We're about to start our first adult league. And I mentioned in our management team meeting, once I get the registration figures, we'll have something to talk about. The team is a twit like. It's a whole other thing to get a team together and sign up. So that'll be happening soon. And in two thousand nineteen, if things continue the way they have been, we will have three new facilities online, possibly more, and that does not include the playground renovation plan that we have created. During this year's budget cycle, in preparation, Robert, since the city manager, asked us to look at our strategic plan, some of the things that we've accomplished while doing the budget process, which is, I'm accustomed to doing that anyway, on a variety of budget. And this is in no way a, the director's goals. This strategic plan initiative is a total team effort. That starts right here at this table with this council, our city manager, and then our administrative staff. But going through this, for leisure services, when I came on board, the first thing I read was your strategic plan and goals. We've achieved a significant amount of those, and the ones that aren't completely achieved, they are underway. Fourteen of your, instead of, unless you want me to read between the individual one, I'd rather just, I see the head nod as you're agreeing. Okay. Fourteen out of twenty-eight are either achieved or underway, meaning dirt is being broken on the ground. From a director's standpoint, being in this business with laws I have, working in local government, I can't tell you just how thankful I feel to be able to work for a community, be supported by a council, by a city manager, by an administrative staff, and departments that really, really work together. There is no way six people in one department can achieve anything. It takes this team here, it takes the other departments working in a cohesive effort to make these things happen. I have worked in cities, and I'm not going to bash any words. Strategic plan is out on your desk, and you had homework assignment every five years to redo it. That's what it was meant for. But it's not the case here. At least, it's not with leisure services. When you go down this list, you can quickly identify the projects that we are talking about that are actual solid achievements. Where you could take the book, go look at the site, and wow, this is happening. The budgeting process has been a very easy one, and it has been doing, I don't get everything I want because I fludge you with all kinds of stuff, given my preference with the amount of money that I have thrown projects out there. But the vision that you take on with making this happen from a leisure services standpoint is unparalleled, this is for me in my career and some of the other places that I have studied and had colleagues with. We're going to continue doing the work. We're going to continue pursuing the goals and the vision of what is set forth for Perry. And I just, I can't thank you. I can't thank you all enough for your support. I can't thank my coworkers and fellow department heads in the community for their support. Anytime I've needed help, I've always gotten it. And anytime I messed up, you've allowed me to fix it and forgave me pretty well. So if you have any questions, I'll open and answer them. I'd like to end the slide presentation on some pictures from social media. These are actually from the city of Perry's website, some of the things that have happened this year. These are not ones that the director has out taken by his phone. Ms. Palmer, thank you very much. She's been very helpful. You might have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have anything other item paper, I don't see any discussion attention at this point. I'm four, the other business and supplemental vendor for A, suggestion to Perry Parkway Parkway.
Yes. You, Mayor and counsel, you may remember, I remember at the last work session, Mr. Hester came in talking about a development at the intersection of Perry Parkway and Sugarloaf Drive that had requested an additional driveway to be in a waiver from you all to install a driveway on Perry Parkway. Do you remember that? And we talked about it, you affirmed, you know, the city's position about not issuing any other type of driveways on there, which I think is very good policy. I did go back, and I do have a bit of a concern that two things may happen with that. One is that it would not be considered equitable relative to what we are doing at the state route intersections. As you may remember, on there, they can't put driveways in based on what P O T allows. And the second thing is the potential loading of traffic on some of our city streets there. Because in all likelihood, the proposal that was coming from, Mr. Hester, is probably going to be fairly common, which it is some relatively intense commercial type of use, like a convenience store or something like that. So what I would like to recommend that you all consider is that we do provide one amendment to that plan. And that would be that at each of those city street intersections, that there could be one right-in, right-out on each side, no more than eight hundred and ninety feet centerline of the driveway to centerline of the street. So in other words, if you came up to one of our intersections, like Sugarloaf Parkway, you could have one right-in, right-out driveway for that certain, but there couldn't be anymore. you could have one right in, right out driveway for that certain, but there couldn't be anymore.
Should that be no more than, or no less than?
No more than eight hundred ninety, and only one. Okay. Maybe there's something a little bit of a nice, obviously not PowerPoint. This is an example, I'll show this side over here first and then move over to your side. Okay? This is an example of the development. We have Sugar Parkway right here, Perry Parkway right here. This is the post-commercial setup, okay? Underneath our current regulations, there cannot be any drives going in or any further down. So if you come in with a commercial development like is being proposed here, which is Zone Four, and all your traffic comes in on Sugar Parkway, circles around, and goes back out. DOT has said that, using this development as an example, they can't have anything here, but they can have this driveway. Remember that's what Mr. Hester had talked about. So what I'm proposing is we make an adjustment relative to the, end up, of course, like four corners at these intersections, that you could have this one drive that could go in, where the centerline could be no more than eight hundred ninety feet from the centerline, or whatever the city's goals. No more than.
Right.
And it only could be one. Now, in all likelihood, with the traffic barriers, DOT is only going to issue one anyway. If you have any development further down, they still have to come in and use this one drive.
So then would there be a requirement? Would be some activity here?
Yes.
If not, that's block, that's block.
Yes, that's right. If you agree with that, that'd be the other aspect that would go with it, is that they're asked to provide clearance for a private drive. Wouldn't be a city maintained street along here, but be a private drive. Similar to what we have where, the Georgia Farm Bureau on Perry Parkway there, where there's that private drive out there. That's not city. That's private.
Well, how would that affect the, totally be a fire back in there? How would that help the fire department to get back in there? And where are we going to have access to it? Would that be a problem?
No.
It should.
Is this one, okay, that's on what side of Sugarloaf is that? Next, okay, right next to, and it don't look similar to the one that is at bonus Sugarloaf?
I believe so. This is a physical example here, though it apply all four corners. Here's Sugarloaf Parkway. Here's us being proposed as a development. Here's Perry Parkway. And right down, Sugarloaf line, and that's a drive. DOT approved. Like I said, it's right now, the only way to get to this would be to go into Sugarloaf and then come in and out of this driveway, right now. And our current policy won't let it do it, I'm thinking what he says. So what he's asking for is change to the policy to allow one right in, right out drive, no more than eight hundred ninety feet. Centerline of Sugarloaf here, right in and right out access to it. Right? And if you approve that, can also have setbacks further back, too, like where that podium is. So that setback would be far enough back to where a drive could go. And that'll take care of all the other subsequent development. I think this will be an advantage for us.
Counsel?
Mr. Gilmore, you're working in this at each of the crossover locations. Each of the city street ones, not the state routes. The state routes are already protected.
Counsel?
Well, one advantage that we see is it does give two accesses. You have a emergency or something, block.
Right around the city street.
It's not on open, it's got to be adjacent to a city street. It just can't be an open run. You just can't have a cut in the middle of.
That's right. In other words, if I had a property further down, I could not get a drive access.
The lady's city street was put in.
Correct.
So that could look like it's right across from Publix, where you come out, over there by McDonald's?
Yes. That's a very example, very good example about how our regulations are set up. Because if you go on the public side, when you're on Perry Parkway, you cross over Houston Lake Road, and there are, I believe, two drives, maybe three. One that goes into the, or the, maybe combined, but there's the Circle K, there's the entrance in for Starbucks, but you go around, and then the last one down there is McDonald's. Okay? Underneath our current regulations, the one from McDonald's, you may remember, lines up with a crossover. That's the last drive that can go in. Right now, in our regulation, until you get down to right by another cross over city street. So for example, the county courthouse thing on the same side, you notice their main drive lines up with the crossover for Sugarloaf Fundy Center.
But we pass this, then that is a property from currently McDonald's and courthouse, but then could have one access from, no more than eight hundred ninety feet from either of those public streets. Either those roads.
Well, the one, not necessarily. If you pass this, it'd have, using the same type of deal, the county could put one in where Sugarloaf cuts over. Eight, no more than eight hundred ninety feet could pass. But that vacant lot right next to where McDonald's is?
Can't have one.
They can't have.
They could have access from.
Yes.
McDonald's really doesn't have access out on, it is a road going into Publix. If they have an access off.
Yeah, that's right. But it's a private drive. It's a private drive that serves the shopping center.
But you could, although you have an access right kind of into that one.
Yes, sure. You can. That's right. And you know, that's right, you know, Publix has got it laid out that way anyway. You know, you can go right down, past the front of Starbucks and McDonald's, get down to that drive.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Sound briefing. Anything else on that, Mr. Gilmore?
Just as a follow-up, based on your discussion here, you will get the resolution coming to you because you're managing your policy. It will incorporate those items in.
Anything else on the other business supplemental agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. Five of the council member items. Mr. King.
Okay.
Ms. Diane Rush. Ms. Jones. Ms. Walker. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Mayor? I do have a couple of items. Mayor and Council, a couple of things for y'all this evening. First of all, the signage. What do y'all think? Y'all think it looks pretty good?
It's great.
I know it took a while, but ultimately, I think what was produced and installed out there looks fantastic. I've heard a lot of good things from the community. We're going to be going out this week with an RFP for additional eighteen signs. That's kind of our ongoing implementation process on that. So just wanted to make sure y'all like it, because that's the general thing we're going to report with. Also, food truck, the Food Truck Friday event?
Mm-hmm.
Very successful.
And it's.
Yeah, it was, it was a big time event. And also, I've heard a lot of good things from the community about this. Have some concerns and things. We're going to be doing a debriefing this week, trying to address some of those concerns and see how we might be able to do it better in the future. And Ms. Myers, tomorrow night, will have a full report for y'all on all of this. So again, that was something that was very positive. And every department, you know, was involved in that. That was a total team effort led by Ms. Myers, but I think she did a fantastic job on that. Finally, now it's a business. Springtime is growing season. We already have some concerns about the maintenance of our right of ways. You know, right now, you can probably locate almost any right of ways, some yellow flowers, some dandelions, that type of thing. We're doing the best we can to keep up with this. We had some restructuring recently take place in Public Works, whereas we removed some contracts with outside contractors, placed as a Miss Spitzer, the landscape manager, gave her a crew. Right now, she's down two people in that crew due to her retirement and someone taking another job. So she's trying to keep up. But what I wanted to address with y'all tonight is the situation we have with some of our primary cover repairs here in the community and the contracts and the maintenances of those rights of way. I have a very convoluted spreadsheet here that outlines how we are currently taking care of all of our facilities and all of our rights of way here in the city. Right now, we have on Main Street, Swift Street, Sandown Boulevard, and Macon Road, and soon, General Corry Hodges, we have a contractor that maintains those rights of way. And right now, we have a contract that was executed in November with a contractor that prescribes a once a month maintenance visit on those rights of way. When I saw these contracts coming into my current position, I was like, well, that's probably not going to work very well. You know, right now, you know, it's pretty much a twice a month type of deal in order to kind of keep them where I think we as a community want them to look. But, you know, obviously, this would be a significant expenditure and, you know, very important decision in regards to the studies of our community and how we keep things up. So I wanted to bring it before y'all and kind of see what you thought about this moving forward. We have those current streets contracted for about thirty thousand dollars per year. And that's for the once a month visit. You know, you obviously have a number of options to move forward. We could go out and do some bids on this. We can adjust the contract to include a second visit per month, which essentially double the cost. We could try and do it in-house and at positions. You know, there's a whole range of options available to you, but I wanted to bring this to y'all's attention because I know y'all are going to get phone calls about this, as you always do every year around this time. You know, we're trying to do the best we can with the resources available to us. So with that being said, I appreciate any sort of input or feedback y'all might have on the situation.
Once a month is not growing season is probably adequate, but during growing season, I think it looks twice. If they'll agree with a contract, that's what I would recommend. You know, in growing season, we cut it, I think, twice a month when we did it.
Yes, sir.
And so I don't, you know, I think we're just, maybe it was November in the winter season.
Is this just mowing the company down? Is mowing, has you, mowing anything, but it's not trash pickup or anything like that?
Yes, they pick up the trash.
They should be picking up trash ahead of time. But I would, I would think you probably need to pick up even in the hall street some trash more than once a month. They need to.
You're not going to find anybody that's going to do that.
But then do we need to, fair to do that? Because it.
Yeah, I agree, it's a problem.
We need to figure out a way to do that.
Obviously, the time to pick trash up and ruffle and cut grass.
Right, right. But if you only cut it once a month, you need to cut trash pickup more than once a month. I don't care how you build that building, it just needs to be.
Okay. Well, we'll go back and take a look at that contract and see how I might build a structure to the best city needs to see.
Are those the only locations you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any more questions on that?
Which contractor?
Realtor Solutions. It's a local business, which is good. And they seem to have done a very good job, you know, with the contracts, so it's right.
And it's a very busy space.
Yes, very much so. We want those, those rights of way to look good. Okay?
Anything else?
That's it. Thank y'all. Oh, actually, that's not it. I apologize. Going to my sack here. Next week is Perry Public Works. It is the 21st to the 25th, and this month, and for the week, will be culminating in our annual cookout at Roger Park, and that will take place at noon. And we'll have hamburgers and hot dogs. Of course, we hope y'all can be there. City staff will be there. It's a good way to show support for our Public Works department. And you got the excellent teachers, I see, so enjoy those.
You should have eaten after that.
I will, absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
Mr. Smith? Albert?
No.
What was?
Nothing.
Thank you. Item six, our department get items. Wood?
Nothing.
Mr. King?
Nothing.
Mr. Dye?
Just a few things, Mayor. Thank you, just for our audience. Up in June, we've got some new programs that we're going to be kicking off. The first one is going to be disc golf. Come learn to play disc golf. We've got a volunteer that is eager to show adults, kids, whoever, if you wonder what that sport is, if you come on Fridays at 6:30 PM to Roger Park, month of June, you can learn.
By the way, those discs do not float.
Nope, they do not. And the mud is very deep, so.
They're ninety bucks plus.
And if you step off on the side thinking it's going to be a sperm wall, it's going to be fun. You won't drown, but you'll definitely buy a new pair of shoes, I promise. So, yeah, we're excited to have that. We've got a very, for those of you who don't know, I guess, disc golf, we have a very popular following here in Perry, and those players that play tournaments and stuff around the state have always been very complimentary to our cause. It's going to be a little bit of a challenge finding spots on those days for those newbies to get some instruction. But the gentleman and his wife are experienced players, and they know how to find their spaces with the etiquette world of disc golf, which is similar to golf. The next one is the adult kickball registration. That will start Monday, June 4th. It'll be going until Friday. That's one of those first adult sports. We're really excited about it. We've had a strong response on social media, but I hinted at it during my budget presentation. When I have teams signed up, I'll be able to give some numbers as to how many people clicked like and showed up to play. I'm hoping it'll go well. It seems like it's going to be a lot of fun. Last and certainly not least, the registration process for our children's summer camp starts June 4th as well. Let me make sure. No, May 19th. May 19th. If you have anybody, kids, friends, relatives, that are asking you about that, I highly recommend they come out Saturday morning. They'll start at 9:00 AM. It says nine to 11:00 on our social media and our flyers. It'll be booked by 10 o'clock, guaranteed. So that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dye. Steve Parker?
No, come on, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Council, just a brief reminder about your headshots and group shot tomorrow. We will start here at 2:30. We're doing some other headshots, but I have blocked off time before pre-council and then in between pre-council and council. So any of you that could get here a little early, that would be great. We can get a few in before we start pre-council and then fill in with the rest of you between pre-council and council. And we will do a group shot, which will include the city attorney. He's talking to Matthew Hubert. So we need to decide kind of how we want to handle the city attorney in the group picture, but we can talk about that later. But any questions about that? All right, just be ready to smile pretty and look nice.
Nothing further, Mayor.
I have two things, sir. First, I'd like to remind everybody, it is Historic Preservation Month this month, and we do have a third tram tour on the 24th. We've still got seats available, so if anybody's interested, please get in touch with me. And the second is, we have just completed the application round for Boost, our crowdfunded micro grant program. Those applications will be going to the boosters very soon, so we can have awards in June. Thank you.
Does the chamber have any?
Oh, always after the chair, sir. Next week, we do have a special day full of ribbon cutting at the chamber, and at 10:00 AM, it is part of Georgia Environmental. I'm sure a lot of you are aware that Chad Bryant and Fitz Wright Engineering is now involved with that company, and they're having a bigger and better presence in our community. So 10:00 AM at their location, then at 2:00 PM, Thursday, the 17th. At 2:00 PM, we have a group ribbon cutting in our location. It's not our ribbon cutting, but it's for all of our kind of businesses that have ribbon order. So we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to get their message out, and there's about three or four of those that will be in our location having the ribbon cutting to celebrate their business here in Perry. So if you can join us that day, and then visit after hours, it's the following Thursday or the 24th, and that is. of the 24th, and that is at my house at 5:30. Thank you.
Anyone else, community have anything to bring to your work? If not, we meet again tomorrow. 5:00 PM is pre-council meeting upstairs, and the conference room, six o'clock is council's, is the council meeting. And you've heard some of the other activities that are going on in and around for that. If there's nothing else to come before us tonight, at this time, I'll understand the motion, and we'll go into executive session for personnel and pending litigation. Motion and a second, here in the discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion, here's United. Thank you for your interest.